All right, we are returning to open session. Kathy, is there any public comment?
There's not.
Oh, right.
I was gonna say July 1st, we weren't.
Oh, that's right, that's right. All right, if there's no public comment, we're gonna move on to the public hearing for FY23 budget. I've gotta make sure I've got my motions up, sorry. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to open the budget hearing for approving the FY23 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Stephanie, are you with us?
She's on it.
Aye, aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
And Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is open.
During this hearing, are there any public comments, or is this discussion?
This is just public comments.
Oh, yeah, there's no public comment?
No ones here.
Uh, I guess on that then, is there a motion to close for the Board of Education to declare the budget hearing for approving the FY23 budget to be closed?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
And Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed.
All right, uh, next item is the changes to the agenda. Is there any board members who'd like to change the agenda? No. And then moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right, thanks, Linda. Um, as you know, this time of year, we've really been looking at our student enrollment information really since spring, but um, as of July 1st, we kinda make the shift and you're able to see the change in enrollment from grade level, um, from a past year to the grade level anticipated for this coming year. I would say that our enrollment looks, continues to look uneven. I think that's kind of a feature of District 96. It tends to cluster around sometimes one school more than another, and sometimes in a different year, it's different than that. And um, trying to make sort of a pattern out of it is challenging, but I do think sort of our, you know, our assignment algorithm does help us make sense of it in terms of making those assignments. We have district-wide 139 kindergarteners. This is one less than last year at this time, and actually, we had one additional enrollment since the report was published, so we're even at where we were last year, which again, though overall seems a bit lower to us than we were thinking, particularly with full-day kindergarten. We, we often get many new first graders, even second graders, and really, um, across the grade level span as, as new families move into the district. But um, I think we anticipated that maybe those families that come as new first graders would be arriving as new kindergarteners this year, and so far, that doesn't seem to be the case unless overall enrollment looks like it may be going down. But again, we just don't have enough data to describe this as a trend, but um, it's something we're keeping a close eye on. It is only July 20th, and we know that families can continue to enroll, um, register with us, so I anticipate these numbers may change some, but it is interesting to look at the fact that we're even from where we were last year. I don't know if board members have any questions about, about the enrollment information you have in front of you?
There's a clarifying question that kinda hit me when I was reading this version of that, I've looked at this so many times and I've never thought about this before. The change, does that change from the second graders that were second graders last year to the second graders that are second graders this year? Cause it says from August 21st, so these are different cohorts.
Right, so you're looking at there were more second grader, you know, in this particular case, there were, there are fewer second graders, right? We're down nine compared to second grade last year. So we're not taking a group of kids and seeing who's come and gone, we're really taking second grade compared to second grade.
It's not only the negatives, it's the positives. It's not that there are more third graders becoming fourth graders, like we added kids in that cohort, it's that the last year was bigger or smaller than the this year.
Right, for the same grade. Yeah. So for example, you said like 28 more fifth graders. Fifth graders is one of our, is it the most, not that the most highly enrolled, I guess third grade is 196 students.
Yeah, I mean, the big one that really stood out was the minus 16 fourth graders at Ames and the minus 11 fourth graders at Central, and I was just like, wow, did we lose that many kids from third grade to fourth grade, but it's the fourth grade class is smaller than it was last year.
Right, right.
I just got a question with the incoming kindergarteners. Hopefully, summer was made much easier for everyone not figuring out ANPM.
Yes.
I know there's still kind of home, like, distribution with the algorithm, et cetera, but um, how many do you know right now that are participating in the half-day only? Did we decide that they would all be at one school, or are there gonna be half-days at the multiple schools?
Right, so I think it's three, right, Angela? Right now, there's three students, three families that have requested half-day, and they are not at the same school. Some have a sibling. We've, we've thought about the idea of clustering. I know when we made our commitments around the program options, when we talked about it back in February, or whatever it last was, we said that we could offer it at any school, because it's really kind of a matter of scheduling, you know, how's, how we set up the course schedule. We did wonder if families might like just to be around other half-day students, but there are challenges with both geography as well as just family, um, having siblings, so I don't think that's going to be possible, right? Angela and I have been in communication with some of the families, so.
No, that helps, thanks.
Three out of 140?
140, right, right. The next thing on superintendent's report is summer school update, and Kim Hefner has agreed to give us a brief summer school update. Summer school started on, is that just Monday, the 18th?
Just Monday.
Yeah, yeah. Kim, as you know, is also not just the Hollywood principal, she is our summer school principal.
Thank you for hosting this. As Martha said, Dr. Reinefro said, we started summer school on Monday. Always an exciting time. You probably know that we have two distinct strands, for lack of a better term, of summer school classes. We've got our skill-building classes in the areas of math and reading, and children qualify to be invited to those classes based on, um, their assessment data and their involvement in our MTSS program during the year, um, so that they receive an invitation. Those classes meet one hour a day, four days a week. All of summer school runs Monday through Thursday for the full four weeks. This year, we have approximately 90 students involved in our skill-building classes. The other strand is our enrichment classes, what we call enrichment classes. Enrichment classes come about, um, just based on teacher interest in offering the classes. They are offered in a catalog. Families can select those based on topic, grade level, um, things like that. This year, we've, we always have the wonderful transition to Hauser class, which is a big hit with our incoming sixth graders. But this year, kind of in response to the pandemic, we had a, a couple, and the, what we saw in our children, a couple other new classes that teachers really felt interested in offering, um, one of them was in an executive functioning class. One, we have social emotional learning classes at every level, kindergarten through fifth grade, and then we are offering a couple new sports classes, touch rugby and field sports. So, um, so our teachers do a great job, uh, considering their interests and what would be good for children. Some of these classes run an hour a day for one week, just enough to get their feet wet. Some run an hour a day for two weeks. And then you have like our robotics or our volleyball camp, which run three or four hours depending. Both of those classes are huge this year. Robotics is completely full. So we struggled in the past to get 12 students enrolled. This year, we've maxed out at 24, and we still have one on the waiting list. Isn't that wonderful? Our volleyball camp also is at least double the size of what it's been in the past, and I'm still, we still add students to these classes. We close registration through PushCoin around, this year, we did on June 10th, and we have to look at enrollment, and any class, enrichment class that has fewer than six children will not run. It's just cost prohibitive and, um, but the ones with six or more do run, and we continue to add children throughout the summer as long as there's space available. So, um, we, we do a, our teachers do a great job with the offerings. I've gotten a couple of calls from parents this year, new to the district, just saying what a wonderful variety of classes are, are offered, so. So we have 90 children in skill-building, about 340 in all of the classes, 270 in enrichment, and then we have about 20 children who take advantage of both skill-building and enrichment classes. And I think that's really important. In the past, long past, the enrichment classes took up the whole time of summer school, and we just really wanted children to be able to take a class they're interested in as well, um, so we've added that variety to the class. It's being held this year at the Central Hauser campus, which is where we love to hold it, because then the transition to Hauser, kiddos really get Hauser experience.
Much better than Onsu.
Yeah, it's hard to do a scavenger hunt around the building on.
Yeah.
Are there any questions? Another thing that I, I'd like to share is that our children who qualify for free and reduced lunch also are eligible for free and reduced summer school, whether it's skill-building or enrichment. Um, you know, giving children who struggle, have certain adversities in life, the ability to, uh, enrich and grow and have new and different experiences is, is essential to our equity work.
How do we reach out to those families to let them know that, or is it? I mean, is it, you know what I mean, is it utilized, like, do they?
Well, I can tell you that, uh, I've got some fact, uh, some data here that, uh, in all of summer school, in the district, we have approximately 19%, 19.4% of our children are low-income. In summer school altogether, um, of all the children in summer school, 16.72, so it's pretty close.
Pretty close, yeah.
Pretty close. Um, some of the barriers to summer school is transportation, um, the fact that it is a partial day.
Right.
A lot of families are looking for childcare, um, and so, uh, we continue to work to increase that number.
That's great.
What do you think drove the spike in the robotics stuff? I mean, is there any?
It's cool.
No, I mean, it is, but it's, it's interesting. You said in the past, like, you struggled to get 12, and then all of a sudden, it seems like there's like a big spike this year. I mean, I know when Ames did the science fair, the robotics club was there, and like, there was a couple other, um, as they, as they broke down, there's so many kids there, they broke the judging down into sections, and I, I heard from many, almost all the students how much they liked the, all the robotic stuff they had in there. I was just curious, has there been like a big, like, have they been doing road shows and like recruiting kids in, and yeah?
I think just the fact that it's, this is, I believe, maybe the fourth year.
Right, I think my daughter did it the very first year, and it was, she's right, like, it was trying to build, and they were building a program, looking also for materials, because it's an expensive program, and so I'm really impressed that it's grown, um, and there are competitions, and they learn to build and code everything, and so it's a long process, but it's, I'm glad to hear it's growing.
Me too. And it, uh, it used to also be open to children in seventh and eighth grade, and as of last year, we opened it up to sixth graders as well. I don't have the breakdown right now in front of me about how many sixth graders versus seventh and eighth graders, um, but all of those things help increase the program. We also have a, a class offered beginning coding for the elementary age children, and I think that has helped build an interest also.
Yeah, that was one of the harder things, to find someone that would code the robot, because not everyone had that experience, so you have some that were given a job of building and some designing, but you really do need the coding person, so I would love to see a lot of kiddos learn that, just because it's good for them.
Absolutely.
But as you know, that's a different question, but thank you so much.
Sure, happy to share. Any other questions regarding summer school? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share and to support this wonderful program for our learning communities.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
The other thing that, um, along with summer school, is also planning a lot of our professional development for the coming year. So I have, I've shared with you the agenda for our August 22nd, August 23rd Institute Day, so those are the days that we kick off with all of our staff, um, so that schedule's there for you, and I always wanna remind the board that you are also invited. This year will be the afternoon session on the 22nd. If you really wanna come and learn about new elementary math curriculum, we could talk to Angela about your involvement in that too, but I know, um, Dan will be giving a welcome back speech, as he always does, and then, um, you know, our, our union welcomes people, we introduce our new staff, um, and then we're, uh, we have a keynote speaker, Jose Anfelipo, who is actually a superintendent up in Wisconsin, he's written a couple of books, and he does, um, really about reconnecting to the values and the mission of teaching, that, uh, there's been a lot of talk that after two-plus years of COVID, and having done a lot of logistics and a lot of management and dealt with a lot of challenges, um, you know, really looking forward to the opportunity to really sort of reflect on the big ideas and the value and importance of teaching, and also taking care of our, of each other, and obviously taking care of our students, so looking forward to that. Any questions about that?
Is it at the same location?
No, we're gonna be here, we're gonna be at the Hauser auditorium.
Sorry, I maybe didn't hear the, thank you.
Yeah.
The only thing I might say is, um, with, uh, just the conversations you and I have been having, and, uh, like, like personnel-related, with the, this gentleman, Don White, I mean, it sounds like he's pretty engaging and, like, really getting in with a lot of stuff, so, I saw his, I think, wasn't his name on here, or was that?
It's, he, he was on the Educational Leadership Solutions Contract that's under consent agenda.
Yeah, nevermind, I'm getting stuff.
He's, he's great, great with data, great with, um, some of the key performance indicators, and we'll talk more about potentially even him coming to talk with the board, if that's an interest of the, of board in the future, but, um, probably not a big keynote speaker.
No, you're right, I'm looking at this thing again, I'm getting my, getting my stuff mixed up, so, okay.
No worries. All right.
Um, so next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Wesley, will you read the consent agenda for us?
Yeah, so tonight's consent agenda is meetings from previous minutes, from previous, minutes from previous meetings of June 1st, 2022 Committee of the Whole, June 15th, 2022, closed session, June 15th, 2022, regular business meeting, personnel report as presented in Board Book, payables pre-list as of June 30th, 2022, and July 20th, 2022, our review of closed session minutes of the previous six months, which we are going to remain closed, and, um, Educational Leadership Solutions Contract, which is what I just referenced, so, that's on the consent agenda. That's it.
Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes.
All right, next item is board member comments. Are there any board member comments?
Congratulations to you on all the hard work that you put into, um, your son being drafted.
We'll talk about that later. Thank you.
Sorry, I embarrassed you.
Yeah, no, thank you, yeah. Any other board member comments? Nope, all right, moving on to committee reports. First up is Stephanie with the Policy Committee.
Um, okay, Martha, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I have any new policy committee updates. What we still have outstanding from the press 109 is to be discussed under, I believe it's old business, um, so that's kind of our outstanding policy on administering medicine to students, which involve the conversation with regards to Narcan, so. Martha, was there anything else?
Correct, yes. No, that's it, that's it. We're on pause with any press updates for now, other than addressing this one last policy that we haven't finalized.
All right then, moving on to Facilities Committee, Joel?
Sure, uh, we met David and I and the architects, and Ramash and Martha, uh, two weeks ago, July 8th, uh, talked about a number of things, that agenda's in the, in this, in the Board Book, uh, the big items were the water main and the, um, building maintenance was in progress, uh, so, actually, if you look on the northwest side of this building, you'll see a bunch of tuck pointing that was done, but that was all in progress, uh, and this kind of relates back to the 10-year facility plan, and that was simply that, uh, with something like tuck pointing, uh, it tends to look kind of patchy, and you tend to be opening up new issues as you do your work, so it may be better to deal with the whole building all at once. That was Ramash's thought on that, um, and just continuing to reevaluate or evaluate that architect's, the architect's plan, the things that needed to be addressed. Things get used, and time takes its toll. The next big topic was Blythe Park, and that was both a continuing effort to advance those plans, the architect's doing that, um, we briefly talked about whether or not enrollment changes were significant, some of the things we've seen, um, concerns that maybe these spikes in enrollment should be addressed. General consensus seemed to be that we have lips and bubbles in our enrollment, as Martha noted earlier, and that's just the way things work, and so a one, a one-year spike or drop is not really all that significant when you start thinking about the housing that's available in town. Really, it didn't need much more discussion. As you can see in the agenda, there is some Blythe Park community engagement with the PTA, August 30th in the morning, and then September 27th at 7:00 PM, and this is an update of the plans as they are, and just keeping people engaged. And then the goal was to have these plans complete near the end of the year, so that we can go to bid, and, um, Ramash has continued to keep his cost estimates up to date, but we know that inflation and supply chain and everything else can affect those bids, so that's more of a just wait and see. And then we talked a little bit about Central Hauser, and that now we are going to have to start speaking to Village about parking and how various zoning and code rules would be applied, and, uh, the other big thing is that we asked the architect to produce a MOU to look at the interior spaces of Hauser for PE and gym, because the instructors there have noted some, some needs, so we asked them to do that.
Yeah, I'd say one thing, um, as they looked at the configuration and the, the recreational field area, which has not been defined as turf or grass, but they were saying that they often use the parking lot area for like, you know, uh, as a secret skill, as a supplemental space, and so we have to make sure that we're not inadvertently taking space away from PE, you know, we're trying to make it more usable space, and the right amount of space to kind of has come back as a, a sort of continued area of focus, but some of their feedback, I think, led DLA to say like, do we need to sort of rethink this configuration even a bit?
Inadvertently precluding its continued use.
Because they're really inside, there's no where else for them to go, right?
Yeah, they're, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I don't know where they would go.
Right.
But, yeah, not much flexibility there.
Which leads to why we don't wanna rush this.
Right, right. I think there'll be more and more like a summer of 2024, the.
Can you remind Joel about the traffic engineer, like, did they finish their study?
They had finished their study, and we heard their presentation.
Right, I just can't remember if they had a report or?
Because the Village did a traffic study fairly recently.
Right.
Except I can't find it, my files.
Right, I do remember that.
And anything that the traffic engineer suggested would have to be, the Village has to be on board.
Correct, right, thank you. Okay, is that all?
So do you have a parking update from the Village, or that's just?
No, that's, that's continuing discussion.
With what we need to do.
Yes.
Right.
All right, moving on to Education Committee, Cheryl?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, same here.
Other than the summer school update that Kim already did a great job of, so.
Yep. If not, then Personnel Committee, Wesley?
No, nothing to share.
All right, Finance Committee, either?
So, we got a budget that we're gonna approve in our old business, but just to, I guess, we'll just frame it up a little bit for, for Jim when he comes on. Balance again, is, we have a balanced budget, it's, um, I mean, it's well, very well thought out, um, projections are very realistic, both on the revenue side and, um, the expense side. You also notice differently that we have a different graph in there, it's called the realistic projections, and while that is realistic, it's still, um, somewhat conservative, but it does show that we still have, uh, very healthy reserves well into the future.
Well, great, let's move right along into Old Business then, and the first item is to approve the FY23 budget. I'm assuming I need to put the motion out there and then we'll have the discussion? All right. So, is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the 2022, 2023 budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Not unless something's changed dramatically.
Yeah, it really hasn't, right? Jim has, these are the same slides from the last presentation.
Right, that's all that I would ever wanna know, is it different? It doesn't look like it, so.
I just see if there's any questions, but it's.
Well, the, the one question on the FY23 total, total revenues, you noted that next year's property tax would be 0.73% increase.
Right, that's how it comes to zero.
Right.
Probably gonna be a bigger increase.
Okay, so that was the, that was the increase.
Yes, that's what I think there's.
Just making sure that you were balancing.
Yeah, I would expect more increase there.
Is there no further discussion?
Just noting, and Jimmy can confirm or deny my observation, but for FY23, FY23, we do have a 6% increase in our operating expenses, but that the majority of that is personnel and kindergarten, and additional support on the administration side.
Right.
Yes?
We have about seven positions for the kindergarten side, teacher at Blythe and special ed position, so that, that probably accounts for 3% of the increase, and the other three, inflation.
Is just normal.
Yeah.
Are there any other discussion items? All right, if not, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhal?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Merhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Okay, budget passes.
All right, on to the next item, um, policy 7:270, administering medicines to students. Should we discuss before the motion?
Yes.
So we have a little more.
Does Stephanie have any, you know, new?
Yeah.
So Stephanie, I'll kind of start here, and then feel free to add in that, um, you know, we talked about this last time, and in particular, it's the issue of the district having the opioid antagonists, Narcan drugs to be able to administer to not just a student, actually, when you go back and review the proposed procedures from press, and I think the title of the policy is a bit confusing, because it talks about administering medication to students, but the procedures do indicate that it could be staff, visitors, or students, um, and, so, so wanted to clarify that. And then also, we reached back out to our nurses for more discussion. I also informally reached out to other school districts. I think it's rare that school districts are deciding to move forward with having the opioid antagonists and having their nurse trained and ready to administer them. It doesn't mean that we can't, um, our liability insurance provider has said that it's something that is possible, our attorney has said it's something that's possible, um, but one of the things we talked about, and it would be my proposal here, is that we, we continue to study that area, if the board is interested in us, continue to study, but we go ahead and adopt the policy without that, without the opioid antagonist optional portion, because I do wanna make sure that this policy is current and up to date, um, because it does speak to all the other, you know, very important.
Epinephrine.
Asm inhalers and undesignated epinephrine and gluprigon for di, children with diabetes, and so, right Pam, if you have other questions, Pam has been part of these ongoing conversations as well, but it would be my thought that we approve it without the opioid antagonists, if the board is interested in us, continuing to study that, we can always come back and revise the policy with, with board action.
When you say it's a rarity, are you specifically referring to K-8, those younger schools?
I've talked to some high school districts too.
Even high schools?
Yeah, yeah, it just doesn't seem.
That's interesting, yeah. That's interesting, yeah.
Common, and maybe, actually, I think I would say it seems rare.
Right.
Um, and it might be something that changes over time. We've talked about the fact that, um, you know, our nurses really heard about it through some of the public health information that was being shared through Cook County Department of Public Health. I think it's a, it's a big idea that's out there, that this medication is not that hard to administer, that unfortunately, people suffering from a overdose could be something that we could encounter, and a seemingly typical situation. Uh, we do feel our paramedics are really close by. That was another one that I heard.
Yeah, it's like two minutes.
People should say like, look, our paramedics just aren't far away, and it's. So again, it's, it, there's really a choice in it, and I don't mean to be overly directing it, but I, just the more, I want to share with you that I'm not hearing districts say, oh, yes, we adopted that, oh, yes, we adopted that, so. Do you, I'm sorry, you were gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, I'm very comfortable with that. I know that the last meeting, it seemed like a slightly foreign concept as well in our K-8 school, um, and so I know we wanted to throw it back to the nurses to get more information and, and do some research, so I appreciate that. I, I'm very comfortable with that, and I think we can just follow. You know, i- if this is something that school districts are moving towards, then maybe we look into it, but I'm comfortable with that.
Yes, what do the nurses, I mean, what, I mean, I know the nurses brought it to us originally. I mean, have they still, what are their opinions now?
It was through, as Martha said, one of their K-8, you know, webinars and such, that it, that it is something that was supposed to do. I think the majority feel that it's, that the, um, emergency health providers are.
So you're talking parameters, what you're saying?
They feel very comfortable with that.
Paramedics you're talking to?
Yes. Um, that they're so close in our geographic area, where it's all intense, like, you have to wait for them to go across town to get to someone, that they would be able to be there in time.
Very good. So is that what's in front of us here? Because I was trying to figure out, I didn't go back and compare, but I was like, this doesn't look like the same document. So this is the same with the, the opioid part of it, just cut out, so.
Yeah. Well, I don't think we had ever, um, adopted, so.
No.
This press plus, this update is, came up under just the updates, and it didn't have that language, because we did not originally adopt the language when we first implemented this policy and adopted it in 2019. Um, so we can approve it as is, because it excludes that language. If we wanted to add it, we, we would have had to, you know, amend it and go back and add it. But this just includes the general updates to footnotes, essentially.
Yeah, it's not struck out when I read it here.
But you looked at the one that there was a lot of option this, option that, yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's different.
Yeah, there's a lot of add-on language.
Yeah, and that's why I was like, when I first read this, I was like, I feel like this was around Narcan, but I'm not seeing any of that stuff in here, and that's because that was all it's worth, or leaving that off the table, and we're just approving this standard policy.
Yeah.
So, I mean, from my opinion, because the nurses brought it to us, and now they're comfortable with it, I'm buying what this has as, I mean, and what's presented to us, I.
And I really appreciate that they brought it to our attention as well. Like, I'm glad that they're, you know.
I feel like they were really doing their duty for public health messaging. Um, we felt very important, I think, when we stopped and sort of thought about it pragmatically, started to talk about other school districts, consider that, you know, emergency health services are, are close by all of our schools, really, and very responsive. Um, we're, we're comfortable kind of placing it on hold, I would say on hold indefinitely. Um, you know, if I think if we start to hear that other districts are adopting it, um, we could bring it back really at any time.
Yep. That works for me. Any other comments?
I'm comfortable if the nurses and everyone that discussed it are comfortable. They're the ones that brought it.
Stephanie, do you have anything else to add, or you're, you're good?
No, I'm good, yeah. I, hopefully, the questions that the Board had, um, had on their minds when we first discussed it have been addressed. So just thanks, Martha, for, um, you know, continuing the conversation with Pam and the nurses, as well as, you know, doing the research on, um, what some of the other K-8 and even high schools locally are doing.
Alright, so with that, um, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the second reading and adoption of press policy number 109, call the C-7:270 as presented?
Still moved.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
House is approved.
Alright, and then on to the final topic under Old Business, uh, S.H.I.E.L.D. testing 2022-2023.
And this isn't necessarily an action item, but I did want to bring just, um, most recent updates to your attention. Um, I've been sort of sharing some of this along the way, but just to share with all of you that S.H.I.E.L.D. has now made it clear that unobserved sample collection, which means gathering saliva at home, is allowable. Um, they have asked for a minimum of at least 50. They've indicated to us that a minimum of 50 could even be 50 in the entire district if, because testing at home, sort of the district could count as one site. Um, and then, uh, the other issue was the issue of consent. And so if you recall, last year, we did the opt-out, where it basically, we said to all families, please participate, you are participating unless you explicitly tell us you don't want to participate. Um, the recommendation this year would be to go with an opt-in, just because I think opinions and practices have changed enough among families, even conferring with legal counsel. Um, the idea that, that opt-in is the clearest and most explicit way at a time when I think the landscape continues to shift and change around testing and what, um, people may want, not for their children or not. So, you know, my thoughts would be that we go with, um, the opt-in, explicit consent from families, that we go with the home testing, um, with an understanding that we may be combining sites in terms of the days in which the samples are actually collected and processed, and that's going to depend on the number of participants. And I know we've tried to guess at that, our principal team, our leadership team, we've talked about it. It's really hard, it's really hard to know where people, um, where families are. I think staff have seen it as a, a nice measure of additional safety and mitigation. I think many, many of our families have, but we know those thoughts and opinions were changing. We also know that they ask you not to test for 90 days post-COVID, and that that has impacted a lot of families as well. So I think this would be the cleanest, clearest way to do it, to move forward with opt-in, explicit consent, home testing, and, and see where we are. Um, but S.H.I.E.L.D. continues to offer this for free as a service to the school district. Again, an area that I worked with West 40, asked them to survey just our West 40 districts. We didn't get responses from all 40, but I would say, again, a smaller number of districts are participating, and that's really coming here.
Are any districts still doing the in-school testing? Is that even offered?
So, yeah, it would still be an option.
Okay.
I, I don't know for sure. I think Southern Burwood may be doing it in-house. I think, you know, people are still just kind of learning about the at-home option.
Is it the same at-home option that we did before we did in the school? Or is it spin tube, and you bring it in, or?
So it's, you know, it's all a little different, because S.H.I.E.L.D. is different than that LaGrange 102 lab setup. So the tube, we know, is larger, their, their procedure, you know, you use a funnel and a tube, and, um, they have a protocol for it that they have not really shared with us yet. But I would say roughly the same. They'll supply the materials, they'll, um, we will collect the material somehow, and then S.H.I.E.L.D. would collect from us and transport to the lab.
Yep. So would we allow families to drop it off at their school, and then would we collect it from our school?
Yeah, that's what I envisioned, that we wouldn't ask families, like, let's say, you drive over to Hollywood.
Oh, but, no, that's weird, yeah.
We still want to make it as easy as possible for families to participate, yeah.
Right, if you want to participate, let's have them.
Yeah, yeah. What I don't know is, what I was saying is, last year, if you recall, there was a certain school on Wednesday, every, every school had a day.
Probably did, well, depending on the amount.
Yeah, but depending on the numbers, it could be, today's the day everybody's supposed to bring theirs, or something, so.
And some people have those tests at home, they're not PCR tests, but they may be relying on those more.
Right, right. If you think back to early on, you know, they're really.
There was nothing.
It was hard to get a PCR test, it was hard to get a binax test, it was, you know, so, um, I think families have, a lot, just a lot of it's become more accessible for people.
So just how to do, I mean, I know this is still work, though, but is there any thought, so would they opt-in, would they send the supplies home, like, for the week? I mean, per week, month, the year?
Yeah, I don't know. I honestly don't know how they're going to, um, to do it. I've just, I mean, you know, I've indicated that, like, we want to understand that, that part of the process, and, um, I know they piloted it. Um, actually, Angela, I think they piloted it in Oak Park, right? In District 97. I don't know if you have any insight to how they did it, if they sent home. Kind of, they sent home the test tube, it's got a code on it, you bring it back, yeah.
Okay.
And really, I didn't set this up as an action item, but just in terms of Board direction, if they're, if, if you're not comfortable with the opt-in, or not comfortable with the at-home testing, I mean, these are still options being considered.
No, I think everything you said makes sense, just with the change in environment, and the not being quite as, um, well, like, undermining what's going on with, like, all the pops and the fights and everything, but it's just, it's a different environment